Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. We welcome everybody here on this beautiful day. It's another one of those days I wish we could have this meeting outside. Thank you all for coming. At this time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Tim Sloan to offer an invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for each and every one's gathered here this day. We thank you for the opportunity and the ability to come to this government center to make decisions for the people, to do the best that we can for those individuals and the citizens of Lee County. We ask for your guidance, for your direction, for your safe travels and safety amongst each and everyone, and pray that the decisions we make are what you would see fit for all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anything, any additional items for the agenda? Okay. Do I have a motion? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Approval of consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. So we go into public comments. Ms. Terrica Luxton.
Hi. I'm Terrica Luxton. I'm from Sanford, and I also live in Miami. At your last meeting, I heard Mr. Reeder's from the VQ's overquoted statement on how maybe chromium six was naturally occurring. That is a lie. Chromium six does not occur naturally. I listened to his report, and I heard a stupid remark about, and I know others here did too, about him being willing to drink a glass of the contaminated well water. A true dare would be to eat and drink from that property for a year, like Dr. Hawkins' case here in Lee County. This being because it is not instant, but a buildup from constant use as residents here does. I heard his self pitch and the naturally occurring, and I didn't believe it. I didn't believe it the first day. I didn't believe it when I watched the video the next day. After coming here, I checked it out, especially after hearing Dr. Hawkins say that she had to throw away her food that she canned with the water from her well. Because, and I also checked out, checked it out with Dr. Linnley. His response was, "You are correct. Chromium six is a human product of mining, refining, and industrial activity. So when Chromium six shows up in monitoring results, you can bet it is associated with industrial discharge, not natural occurrence." Okay. This being said, from my heart to y'all's, I am saying this is another good reason to not have coal ash dumped in this same area. Reddell has put together a map of the homes that have the chromium pests now. We're adding them on daily as we can. It doesn't have the ponds yet. We are going to try to add them on too. So far, we've got a count of nineteen. I don't know what you all've got, but we're adding them as we can. I've sent a little yellow slip around to all of you with the tiny URL because it's eighty-one characters for the full size. Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is, as it says on this sign, environmentally has been trying to get water since the day after Thanksgiving for those folks. We've reached out every way we can reach out because we have to do it verbally, we have to do it social media. We don't have any budgets. Liberty Pray Center got in contact with us yesterday, and they have now, after twenty-four hours, got ten different people to commit to bringing water to coal. So they will be working with us to get some more water out there. And that's about it for us.
Thank you, too. Thank you.
Dr. Joyce Hawkins. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you all again. I just have a few comments and concerns from that report that we had last Thursday evening from Dr. Williams.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder what kind of message, I know what kind of message I am getting. He said, or someone said, "We may be better off drinking water from our well than drinking the bottled water, and that's what we have to do is drink the bottled water." And she talked about the foods that I canned and frozen. Dr. Rudolph instructed me to throw everything away, and I'm wondering if that was a little bit hasty from what Dr. Williams said. You have three more, or whatever, you don't have all of the data yet. So why would you scare the mess out of us if everything is not compiled yet and then give out that directly? I would just like to, I know you won't do it, but wear my shoes for a week, and if you have small children, buy water for a week. See what kind of stress and pain that puts you under. That's a big request because I want you to feel our pain. We have those two, I know of the two families with small children, and I cook all the time. And that is really a pain, and thanks to someone in the group that let us know that we could get our gallon jugs refilled for twenty-five cents at the little water houses. Thank you for that because that has been a saver. But I asked you last time, please consider the water containers. I bought one from Walmart, eighty-seven dollars, fifty-five gallon tank. Went to the fire department, did my little thing. Seems like everything I do, it fails. I can't get the water to siphon out. So, you know, I quit. I just go and pay the twenty-five cents. But put yourselves in my shoes, please. Get all of the data, and that comes from Department of Health and Human Services or wherever it comes from, and really give us a good report of telling us what we really need to do. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins.
Marshall Legan, fourteen thirteen pound medapaath. And in reference to something Dr. Hawkins just said, I'm sure you all noticed that even someone on our environmental board questioned what Dr. Williams had said. It was, I'm the one that asked about the canned vegetables because I knew Dr. Hawkins had to discard hers, and Williams said, "Oh, no problem." But someone on our own environmental board said, "You need to know, we need a botanist. You need to know plants before you start saying something like that." I mean, I'm just a retired elementary school teacher, but I know you need more information than just to go back and forth. You need the person who knows if you're going to talk about vegetables, you need a botanist, not an ex OB-GYN. Okay. Thursday's joint meeting of city and county officials was both interesting and concerning. It seems that not everyone is on the same planet, much less the same page. I heard hexavalent chromium is naturally occurring. I heard chromium is naturally occurring, but C6 is caused by industrial interaction with chromium. I heard nearly accusatory comments, and I have to say that when I came in, I thought just the setup itself looked a little adversarial, I thought. It looked like it was some of the time. Next time, you might want to do it like this, every other one. But anyway. I heard nearly accusatory comments or questions from the environmental panel directed at the VOC, which made me wonder if communication is a part of local governmental decorum, or if all appointees are keeping in step and doing their homework. Doesn't seem like everybody's working with the same information. I heard questions which seem to be honest inquiries for information from the environmental members, which could have been answered by involved citizens in the audience because the information was either somewhat old news or easily accessible. But perhaps the most alarming thing I heard was three weeks. Though we would love for this catastrophic water issue to have a simple solution, the magic number to be revealed by the state in three weeks is not the answer for us. I don't mean that it's not impactful, but it's not our answer. My fear is that nearly all the contaminated wells' levels of C6 will fall within the acceptable range announced in three weeks. I saw that. Excuse me. Let me find my place. Will fall within the acceptable range, and nothing will be done for affected people. Regardless of the perhaps minuscule amount of consumption, I realize we're talking parts, I know all that, but you're also talking being ingested by a three-day-old baby. Now, who knows those answers? No one can predict a newborn's predisposition to handling ingested toxins. Some may appear to be unaffected, some may not show adverse effects for years. It's almost Russian roulette. I hope this board won't take the gamble, but instead find a way to help regardless of that three-week revelation. Find a way to help these people get water that at least doesn't show C6 when it's tested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Legan.
Thank you for your comments. Moving into new business, the tax lien advertisement for delinquent 2015 real property taxes. Michelle, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hope you all are doing well. As per North Carolina general statute, one oh five three sixty-nine, I'm here to present our annual report of unpaid taxes. This report is as of January twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-first, twenty sixteen. And the amount of delinquent unpaid real estate taxes at that time was three million one hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. The amount as of today, when I ran the report at three twenty, was two million seven forty-eight four sixty-seven and sixty-five cents.
Two million.
Yes. Two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, four sixty-seven, sixty-five cents. You all were provided access to a list of the delinquent accounts when I submitted the agenda item. We are required to get approval from you to send out the delinquent and debt set-off notices, and also to advertise the tax lien in the local newspaper. We will not advertise any sooner than March tenth, so we will give it a little time after the second notices go out before we submit the list to the newspaper. So tonight, I'm asking for approval of the report and an order to advertise the delinquent real property taxes.
Any questions or comments, Michelle?
I move to approve the order that tax collected to revise the two thousand fifteen delinquent real property tax per NCG S one oh five sixty-nine.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Appointment to the Board of ENR, Ms. Lee.
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, I am before you this evening to present applications for appointment to the Board of Publicization and Review. Currently, you will see on page seventy-six of your agenda package, the current board, you will see that there are five full-time regular members. Of those five, four are up for reappointment. The bylaws state that there are five full-time appointments and five alternate positions, but after talking with Michelle, she thinks that they can get by with three alternates. Here, that's up to the board. You have in your packet, seven applications to be considered, plus at your place, there's a little green note at the top, are three additional applications that were turned in after the deadline and after the agenda packages went out.
You said these three were after the deadline?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
So you need to make at least seven appointments, and that will field the four regular, plus three alternates, and more alternates if you serve a sign.
Do we have a ballot? Okay.
I'd like to just know, I think one of the applicants is already on the board.
Actually, I think two are, no, three are.
Your two alternates have reapplied, and then two of your regular members have reapplied.
Right. Two of your regular members. So Brandon Atkins and Mark.
Michael Donald. Have reapplied.
I'm in favor of, obviously, the ones that are already on, keep them on, and the alternates move into the open spots, and then we can vote on who can become alternates.
Are we going to consider the applicants that's been late?
I think that's up to you.
Is there a policy around that? I'm asking, I don't know. I don't know. What I'd like to do is fix a ballot so we can vote on all the applications.
I think so.
Can, is it possible?
The only thing I, my understanding is they have a training in March, so they have to have the election by March.
Well, I refer to Michelle. You did say that, she did say that there would be an organizational meeting sometime until the first of March, and if you've got new members, you still have to do a training session. I don't think there's a specific date. There's not a specific date in March.
Since we don't have the ballot in front of us, and I would recommend or suggest that we take it until the next meeting, then we will write on it. Then we will have a ballot for us to write on.
Any discussion on the motion?
Do you wish me to continue accepting applications if they come in? And I don't know that they will, but...
I see you're saying wrong. Well, we're asking for applications, and normally we have all getting applications for these boards. So you accept them if they come in?
As long as I have them by the time the agenda package goes out?
I think the deadline needs to be before the package goes out, so we don't have the same problem as we have tonight with three more to look at. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah. I think the process, you go ahead and fix out a ballot, so put the names on it so we can vote across, iron and needle.
We need to take less time.
So you want the deadline to be the same deadline as agenda for the items for the agenda, which is this Friday at noon? Just want to clarify that. This Friday at noon is the agenda deadline.
Since we have enough applications, I don't see anything else.
Okay. Any more discussion? Got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of tabling it until our next meeting with the deadline for applications being this Friday at noon, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The approval of budget amendment, Ms. Hunter. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Do you have before you budget amendment number twelve for this fiscal year? This budget amendment appropriates funds for the health promotion, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in additional funding for that department. That will be used for training and conferences for the health promotion staff. There is no county match required. Those funds were approved by you earlier under consent agenda. They also, maternal health and family planning are receiving sixty thousand dollars in additional funding from the state. Those funds are to be used between the two programs to reduce the infant mortality rate in the county. Again, no county match is required. Also, animal control, you approved a donation of five hundred dollars during your consent agenda. Those funds will be used to purchase a refrigerator to keep animal carcasses in until they can be disposed.
Move to approve.
I'd like one comment. Just me personally, I think it would be more advantageous to purchase a freezer rather than a refrigerator to keep animals.
It is a freezer.
It does say a refrigerator, though.
It's a freezer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All righty. Record done.
Hot off the presses.
Awesome.
Mr. Jones helped put this report together today along with Mr. King, so I'm simply forwarding it to you. There was some discussion about...
I want to be in the comments about that. Be ready.
I think they're ready.
Come on down, as I say.
They're ready. The department has received seventy-two letters out of the three hundred-plus that we have sent out. Twenty-two of the seventy-two respondents appear not to have private wells or surface water features, so we're going to be double-checking that this week, and Mr. Jones will be handling that. Handling that. Thirty-eight samples have been taken so far, with sampling started back on November second. Twenty-one wells have been tested. Fifteen residents have received "Do not drink or cook with" letters. All fifteen tested with high levels of vanadium, plus nine also for hexavalent chromium. Seventeen surface water samples have been tested. Twelve samples are to be taken as of today, two wells and five surface waters, and we're still ordering more kits. So that is where we are on that. The spreadsheet's behind you giving you details of what tests are being done by the folks who have responded. Actually, it shows everybody whether they've responded or not, so it's a pretty detailed spreadsheet for your viewing.
This is a lot better to read, easier to read than that black and white model I've been receiving.
Yes, sir. It is. The color's much easier to read. One of the things that was discussed last week was going ahead and letting the board know that we're going to extend testing for all property owners till the end of this month, and we will be getting that letter out this week. And then we're going to emphasize that this will be the last extension so that we can begin further working with our data to move forward.
Did you say the last month?
Have it in our office by the twenty-seventh. You know, we'll continue to do it until we're finished with them. So we'll send all three hundred-plus property owners' letters again.
Are we still planning to do, have some private testing done as well?
It's going to be our suggestion that once we get all the data done back from the state and the testing that's done, we have our private firm to go out and do a more detailed assessment, reducing the number of variants that might be out there. So what we learned last week was the best thing to do was all the, all the wells that have come back with the high levels, we'll hire a company, send that company out there. They'll do the testing within a day or two of all of them again, and try to eliminate variables such as weather, you know, anything else that might be going on. And then if we still come back with some high levels, at that point, the wells will probably need to be inspected, so we have to see where that goes after that point. Because at some point, the county's responsibility, you know, is, we're overstepping our responsibility in this regard. I did speak to our engineer today, trying to find out if there are whatever possibilities we might have for grants. There are some coming up, but we are still going to lack data that we're going to need. So I talked with Mr. Jones about possibly having to go to door-to-door to get personal information, demographic-type information that will help us in our applications from these folks. We need income level, race, age, how many people are in the household, you know, so on and so forth. So Mr. Jones has done that before in his career, and he has volunteered to do it again, so...
A lot of the grants are for low-income families or for minorities.
But you still need the numbers for the grant, paperwork.
Yes. We have to, we'll have to go get it. So knowing that these, around the applications are coming up in April, you know, as soon as these, we're finished, well, actually, we can start now because we already know who's elevated right now, so we can go get that information, and then as the tests are coming in, we can get the rest of it and have it ready for the application.
Is, is it possible for us to include that in the letter that we're sending back out to just give them a heads-up, to say that, you know, we may be sending a representative from the county out, give his name, whatever, you know, to get information for grants or something?
Might send that in a separate letter.
Yeah, something, just, you know, because I know...
To the people that have gotten the "Do not drink" letter, we'll probably send that letter out separately directly to those people. Probably will send that certified so that we know that they get it.
I mean, I would just, you know, somebody knocking on the door wanting that detailed personal information, I think a letter from the county would be helpful.
They need to ask them to contact you, schedule the time.
Exactly. Yes.
They're expecting you.
Right, right, exactly.
You go to where you build or you go shave?
I was very affected when he did it up in the mountains.
It's gonna get cold again, he may need it. Going door-to-door.
When it warms up, actually this week I thought of that. Or if you come back shaving. You know, something went wrong.
And I did, and I did, I did smile when Ms. Ligon was talking a little bit. Because I, I thought maybe I'd been the only one that read through some of the comments that were made Thursday night. But, you know, there could be a real chance that the, that the levels of what's acceptable would be raised in the next three weeks. And I kinda agree with her that at this point, you know, we've started on a path, probably need to keep going down that path. If we can find a way to get these people water, you know, through the city, then that's probably in. And do it through grants and that kind of stuff, because the grants we're gonna apply for are one hundred percent. But I think we should continue to go down that path, no matter what happens in three weeks, so.
Thank you for that.
Exactly.
What paper grant will it be?
It's a.
I know that there's some community development block rate money available for water-related projects through North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund. And then I think that there's some.
That's the biggie, because the state with the bond money, if they get the bonds passed, will be putting more, more money towards that program.
That money comes through the Department of Commerce with Community Assistance Division. So I'll be checking, I'm already in contact with some grant writers over at the city offices about those grants. And we're offering to, you know.
Some of the late work now to help those applications go forward.
And there could be some EPA grants.
We have not heard back from the EPA, have we, since we sent them that information?
They said about a week, it's been a couple of weeks.
Are you hearing any more from Dr. Rado or DQ to your offices? Just now, just.
Well, we haven't heard anything either since our meeting last Tuesday, have we? I know I haven't.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
But I'm in my discussions today with some folks who do this stuff on a daily basis. It's not uncommon to find yourself in a situation where DHHS and DEQ get different information.
But again, to Dr. Hawkins' point, you know, it is just mind-boggling to have one department on the state level say one thing and another department say another. We do understand.
Well, I did have it explained to me one way in that municipal water gets a lot more treatment. There's a lot more refining processes in municipal water. So they can take river water and process it to make it drinkable. But well water's just raw water that's out of the ground. So I think, I can understand the DHHS, DHHS's point of view, that they wanna be more cautious in their, in their advisories. So that, I think that's the reason for it. But they do need to come to some common ground to, to guide the public water supplies and drinking wells that they can all work off the same digital.
Heath, are you, I mean, everything okay in your department as far as collecting the samples, you know?
Yes, sir.
You able to do that in a timely fashion, kinda keeping up with the phone calls and that type of thing?
We are, we've ordered bottles today and we're gonna pull the samples we got back from the state lab. Probably pulled some today, we'll pull some more tomorrow. And we've ordered some, but they're fluid. We hit a wall when we moved, we didn't get any outlitters for like almost a week.
With the holidays?
Two in one day, then after our meeting, I got one or two about Friday.
Okay.
So that kind of.
So you didn't get inundated after Thursday night, but people are listening, maybe even thinking about it. Okay. 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 Thanks for all you're doing, both of you. Any more questions for these gentlemen?
Another question for them, but this is a question for the board. Has Emergency Services acquired any type of bulk water hauling for the neighborhood?
Well, we have some issues with doing bulk water hauling, mainly with security and making sure that, you know, the water's not tampered with. Emergency Management has forwarded the state contract for both bottled water purchases. And the price is pretty inexpensive. Cases, twenty-four bottles, you can get a pallet with seventy-two cases on it. And the bottles are twenty-nine apiece, works out to five hundred and one dollars in some charge. So that's a pretty, pretty inexpensive price for the blue water.
I know, I, you know, we talked at the retreat about, you know, setting precedent and being careful. But at the same time, getting water to our neighbors. I had several phone calls over the weekend and texts about folks collecting water. And we've got some folks down our way that are interested in helping in a couple of civics groups and churches. I know the article that was in the newspaper, thank you, on the church is doing it for Flint, Michigan. And then when the reporter was at our retreat, you know, we, we were able to, to have a conversation about the need here in our own community. And as I think Terrica said, you know, that church has committed to helping with that, starting on the fifteenth. They're gonna finish up the.
They didn't realize about our local issues. And so the contact was made and I think the, the local residents to help would be great if there was like a, a local place water can be dropped off to, like we were talking about, a little church in that area that would help dish out, that'd make things go smoother as we bring it in.
And that's.
We have a place to bring it to.
That's what we worked on today, or over the weekend and today. There was a little bit of a misconception, I think after the meeting Thursday, that maybe the Environmental Affairs Board was gonna do a water drive. I got a couple of phone calls on that, so I was able to get with April Montgomery this afternoon. And have, we had a good conversation. They are not doing that, but they are working on finding inexpensive water. She has contacted grocery stores and they're getting her their wholesale cost for the water. And then what the EAB members were discussing was putting the challenge out with the help of the newspaper and radio and just in our county word of mouth, in our civic groups, churches, even, you know, schools and whatever. For people to make donations or get a gift card, you know, to that particular grocery store if one of them will agree to do it. And then we can actually, you know, purchase the water by pallet. And you're not having to coordinate so many, you know, like you said, you know, getting the truck somewhere and getting a case at a time type thing. But maybe really.
Maybe there's a church people drop it off, that'd be.
Sure.
That'd be helpful too.
Sure, and I know before the meeting, we didn't get a chance to talk very long, but I talked to some of our Envirly folks and, and they have been delivering water since before Thanksgiving. And, and are willing to continue to coordinate, but you just need the water. Then we understand.
There's all churches that are willing to help if they know how.
Mount Calvary will allow us to store water there. They, they will do that. And Martha Petty and Dr. Hawkins are distributing that water in the community.
And Come Not Baptist has been collecting water since the first of December. I've been taking water from Come Not Baptist over to Colon.
How?
And it's been in the newspaper every week.
Ms., Ms. Hall or, or your sister, I don't know who's who when you all are together.
Ms. Hall or Ms. Ligon?
Either one.
Come up, so it's on, can you come up here?
My question, how many pallets or how many cases of water do you think that Mount Calvary can?
Store?
Yes.
I do not know the answer to that. I, I don't really know what a pallet, I mean, I know what a pallet is, all these Pinterest pallet things. But I don't know how much a pallet would be of water. Come Not Baptist has quite a bit of space. The, the problem with that is I have it coming to, that's my church, and then I carry it over to Colon, which is, can't get just so much water in a car. So I, I can't answer that for you. The, the space at Calvary is not a very large space, but what we're doing right now, and Liberty Praise actually started today. The church that was taking stuff to Flint, Michigan, the pastor and I, when, I saw it on the news Friday night and I was like, ah! And so I talked with him Saturday and they actually started today collecting water for Colon. And tomorrow they're going, we're trying to set up a delivery to Mount Calvary Baptist Church tomorrow. Mount Calvary does not have a lot of space, but it can come and go out, I mean, to the community. It's right there in the community, so it may not have to have such a large space for storage if we coordinate the come and go part.
All right, thank you.
I, I do have a little comment if I could make one. You were talking about getting some demographics, we did that door-to-door and in our meetings over a year ago when we knew the coal ash issue was coming up. And we've, we have, I'm not saying we have the document you have, but we presented it to state in a complaint that we had back last spring. But we have that information of households, work history, health history, number of people, how long have you lived there? Do you have wells, do you have city, do you have animal, we have all that.
Forward that to the manager.
And I'm sure you want a different document.
Not necessarily.
But we'd be glad to share it with you. It was, I will say to you, it was heartbreaking to us. But the reason I even brought it up is to let you know we had it and also to say that we found them to be very receptive. And yes, it took a lot of time and it, some of our people took hours, you know, day after day after day, going door-to-door. But we found the people to be very receptive. We had no, no issues, I know.
I appreciate, I mean, that's great information. If you can forward that to the county manager and it, it certainly won't hurt, let's put it that way, and it may be, it will help.
It will, I guess.
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you. And that, you know, so I, I guess, you know, get some feedback from y'all as far as, you know, moving forward with this water. You know, we've got the EAB that's, you know, willing to do something as far as, you know, getting with the civic and church groups and, and that type of thing and getting them to buy gift cards or, you know, put an account at a store and buy a large quantity of it at one time. And then, you know, perhaps, you know, coordinating with Envirly just to get it to Mount Calvary. If, you know, like, you know, a pickup load at a time or something.
Let me ask you a question, you have something?
I was just gonna say that, you know, Shane has offered to help coordinate that.
Oh, okay, but I, Emergency Management.
We just need to figure out a way to, you know, to, to kind of get everybody together to talk about it.
John, you get that sent up with Shane, would you just get him a check out there and let him purchase the water and how would that happen?
If, if there's a donation made to the county, it would have to go to Lisa. She can deposit it and then we could go out and buy the water.
And just put on their water fund or what?
Yeah, or put.
Colon water.
Colon, yeah, put down under the note. Actually, it was like a, it actually like a letter with it that that's what their donation is for.
Yes.
Can you give it to Lisa?
We have to say it too, that they can donate straight to us, it's on Envirly. It's our water page through PayPal, they can.
Okay, okay. So there's two ways. You can either donate to the county with a cover letter saying to the Colon Water Fund. And we can use that to buy water through Emergency Management and get it delivered or through Envirly's Facebook page?
That's tax deductible on Envirly.
Okay.
It's, we have a page there that set up water info, well water info.
Okay. So, so two different ways, the Envirly page and you can use PayPal for that. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Robert.
That's okay. I'm just trying to keep up with what's going on. I heard that we're sending out like three hundred and twenty-four letters. I would presume that those are property owners. The last count I heard was Friday and I think we had like seventeen contaminated sites. As, as we are soliciting support for water, I think we ought to bear in mind some people like myself might be confused as to trying to supply water to all of Colon and not just seventeen households. And in doing so, I, I think it's real important that we specify that when we start talking about getting support.
It, it's my feeling that as they get the do not drink letters, those houses would qualify for getting one.
I don't disagree with that, but right now you've got seventeen that you know of, is what I'm saying, seventeen out of three hundred and twenty-four.
You wouldn't know how much a household requires on a day?
We'd start to get some of that information as well.
I think maybe what we need to do is just kind of informally get a little committee together, you know.
I'm sort of like Robert, Commissioner Reeves, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if water has been distributed to just whoever wanted the water opposed to those who are, are affected. I don't know, just those who are affected?
Just those who are affected.
Okay, all right.
Understood.
So that's a good point and then I think that if we can provide for them, then that'd be great, I agree.
Well, Ms. Montgomery is out of town, but, I mean, you know, we, we've been back and forth on the phone and she certainly wanted me to keep her updated after the meeting tonight. But kind of what I'm hearing is we kind of need to, if you wanna get together with me and the manager and Shane from Emergency Management. We'll call on one of you ladies and draft you, put another hat on you one more time, one more hat, you know. And, and see if we can coordinate. And then as we start getting some donations, whether it's actual water or money or both, you know, then we can facilitate, help facilitate that.
And it may cut down on the need for storage.
Right. Right.
But I have a follow-up I'd like to ask about, and, and that involves council. I heard that the manager say earlier that we really don't wanna get out in front too far. And I don't know where our boundaries are and what we can do. And I'm not so, I'm not suggesting that you do. But I think at some point we ought to find out either what this board can do in fact and should be doing or find out if there are limits, since the state has accepted responsibility for handling the situation. I don't want it, want us to do anything that would jeopardize their moving forward and not assuming the role they need to assume. So I'm asking that council look into that and the manager and let's try and get some footing underneath us so that we don't start wandering off into areas where we have no good authority and setting up a precedent that we may not be able to keep up.
Well, and, and that's been my concern too, not that we're shirking our responsibility, but I mean, they actually have departments that our state tax dollars pay for, you know, to, to do the kind of thing that we're having to do right now because at least one department said it was naturally occurring, case closed. So here we are. But no, that's a good point, so if you don't mind checking on that, we'll work on that ASAP. Any other questions or concerns or discussion on that? Any other questions or concerns or discussion on that? Um, just if, you know, we could get help from the newspaper, I see they're, they're writing furiously, and I appreciate that. Um, but, uh, you know, also, um, you know, we'll work on, we'll check into the radio stations and.
Actually, I spoke with Mrs. Merterson Saturday.
Okay.
And she's gonna take it upon herself to do a PSA.
Good.
Not specifically naming the Colon project, but understanding that there are families who are in need of some, some, uh, water support. Uh, the other thing is, and I know you may not have had a chance to decide on when, but I'm still recommending that we sit, some members of this board sit with those seventeen families. And as that number increases, then provide an audience for them as well, to see what question or concern they may have that they don't wanna share in the public side.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, um, I think that was a great point at the retreat, you know, we've talked about that for a few days now. Um. Anything else? Okay. Anything else?
Well, for me.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Just that I asked that the young people are meeting as we speak right now on the Lee County Young Commissioners, and they're planning the, uh, July dates, and we need to know when the commission is planning on meeting in July.
Right, um, typically, we meet the third Monday because of the fourth. Um. Is that, is that still, that would be the eighteenth, is that, yes, the eighteenth.
That would be correct, and that would be our only meeting in July.
Mm-hmm. Is, is that, will that work for everybody? And I, and Commissioner Smith, I appreciate you, you know, jumping ahead on that. I, I, I know that bunch is an eager bunch, and it's great, you know, um. The eighteenth, okay, for everyone, that'd be our only meeting in July, and we'll share our spots with the new young commissioners that day. Okay? All right, I don't hear any nays, so we'll take that as an affirmative. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, mm-hmm, that's it.
Good thinking.
Okay, all right.
Just as a, a comment, I, I attended the Triangle J Council of Government, and it's pretty fascinating, they had a, a group of individuals there, one from SAS and one from Vision Charlotte, and then, um, from the North Carolina Research Clean Tech Industry. And, uh, Chatham Park is being built, is gonna be classed as a smart city, um, or built under the same guidelines, and if you have a chance to, uh, read any information about green cities and smart cities, um, it's all about data and what you can do with data, and, um, as we talk about water, one individual, um, actually gets notified how much water he uses each day from his house, runs around a hundred and twenty gallons, which I thought that was kinda high, but that being said, um, he made a comment, he could even tell when his wife washed clothes. And so the, you know, Chair and our uncle didn't always agree with me, but data is a good thing, and in this case, uh, more data will be beneficial to us than less. But, uh, just as information, if you get the chance to, uh, look into that, I think that could be a, a wave of technology for the future and for the Economic Development Group to consider here, um, in Lee County.
But, but, for the record, I don't mind data, it's just I don't want people to know when I wash my clothes. That's the only thing, we had a good conversation on that about how amazing technology is getting these days and what all they can track. Oh, my, um, uh, and to dovetail on that, for the rest of the board, they have put that on our county, that you should have received something, um, where you can access that presentation. Um, so if you didn't, let us know, and I'll make sure it gets sent to you, okay, Doc?
I just was, I don't keep up with the data, but I can always tell my wife hasn't washed.
Understood.
You might have been better off not saying. Much safer. I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Camilla Davis for being the Samaritan Person of the Year, uh, receiving that award. And unfortunately, I'd also like to inform you that I get a little bit emotional, um, Mr. Mansfield Elmore, who was our longtime mental health director here in Lee County. Perhaps the single most compassionate mental health person I've ever met, ever known, ever worked with, served on the board with, has passed away at the age of ninety. He was one tremendous individual if you've never got a chance to meet him. Never seemed to understand when you say you can't do anything, or no, we couldn't, we can't do that, he was always find a way. He was a dear, dear friend to the, to all of us in Lee County, but especially to the homeless and those with ailments. He'll be dearly, dearly missed, and has been for a long time, but very sad when I learned of his passing, thank you.
Thank you, Rob, I'm not aware of that, I appreciate you sharing that with the board. Um, and I'd like to, um, echo that about Ms. Davis, um, and she would be the first one to say, don't talk about me, tell everybody that Girl Scout cookies are on sale, because after our retreat, I was, I was getting texts from her during our retreat Friday that, um, that she had our Girl Scout cookies, and so I went by and spent some time at the Boys and Girls Club, and just a plug for them, you know, if, if you've got some free time to volunteer, uh, my goodness, the things that they're doing at the Boys and Girls Club are just phenomenal, and I went there on a Friday afternoon, and of course, it was a beautiful day, but the kids were just bouncing around and, you know, telling me about their week and, and what all had happened, and about, you know, they enjoyed their snow days and, and had recovered from those and back in the groove of school, and, and they were excited about learning and talking about projects they were doing and that kinda thing, and, and I just applaud all the folks out there at the Boys and Girls Club. Um, they are making a huge difference in our county. And with all that being said, um, I hope everybody has a safe week, and we are on the job as far as the water issues out at Colon, and I, I think it's safe to say that's kinda priority one for us right now, although we are keeping our eye on our other priorities as well, and trying to do all of our jobs well. Um, and I believe we have a motion on this floor.
I move we go into closed session to instruct staff concerned the negotiation of the price and terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at fifteen oh three Elm, Elm Street per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A five.
Okay, all those who favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're in closed session, thank you.